Okay, so we call to order the meeting for June 26, 2025. And before we ask for items from the public, I just want to welcome Anthony back. He had some serious surgery here recently and looking good. And to keep your thoughts and prayers out for Sheriff Blair and his recovery. He had a hip replacement a week ago and is home recovering, and we wish him the best as well. So is there any items from the public at this time?
I'd like to say something about that.
Come on up and give us your name, even though we know you.
Good morning, Richard Dennis. Hey, I just, I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention, primarily citizens of Berkeley County. What a fine job that this council and past councils have done with the facilities in Berkeley County. I came in here to a Region Nine meeting about two weeks ago, and there's a brand-new meeting room over behind us that accommodated everybody very comfortably. We've got the most updated. I cover seven counties for my job, and I go in a lot of courthouses. And I just wanted to be known that, that people are complaining and screaming about these new taxes that we're gonna, the 1%, if we ever get that, the ones that we're putting on the new housing. You've got to pay for what you get, and we've got the, some of the finest facilities in the state. Berkeley Springs has nice ones. Now, they got a brand-new courthouse, so. But I just think that, that this commission and the past commissions that have, that have put all this together have done a phenomenal job, and people just need to be proud. And if they haven't been down here and seen these facilities, they're, they're outstanding. And, and the personnel that, that are in here are outstanding, that are manning them. And I just thought that that should be said for the, for the county, so that's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Any other items from the public? If not, I ask for a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Mr. Vice President, if there's no modifications or changes, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? We have purchase order logs. Tracy is here to answer any questions. Does anyone have any questions regarding a purchase order log for this week?
I'll ask one of the fiscal year.
I'll ask one of the fiscal year, and this is two weeks of purchase logs.
That's correct.
Because we didn't meet last week. So, no questions? Thank you, Tracy. Gary, no internal budget revisions?
No, sir.
Okay. Change of status, bear with me on this one.
You have many, it's two weeks.
Yes, we do. I brought my glasses, too, so. Okay, first of all, hiring recommendation received from Tim Kazah, Director of Community Corrections for Caitlin Langford as a case manager with an annual salary of $50,676 effective July the 7th, 2025. Change of status received from Martin Roberts, Fire Chief for Trevor Lewis to change positions from PT Firefighter to FT Firefighter II with a salary change from $17.83 an hour to an annual salary of $64,602 effective July 1st, 2025. Change of status received from the Honorable Rob Blair, Sheriff for Brandy Sullivan, LE Operations Specialist to increase pay for additional duties with a salary change from $55,832 to $57,832 effective July 1st, 2025. Change of status received from the Honorable Rob Blair, Sheriff for Marcia Kelly, Financial Coordinator to increase pay for additional duties with a salary change from $67,020 to $65,020 effective July 1st, 2025. Change of status received from the Honorable Rob Blair, Sheriff for Jason Scales, LE Special Ops Manager to increase pay for additional duties with a salary change from $57,103 to $59,103 effective July 1st, 2025. Change of status received in Honorable Rob Blair, Sheriff for Jared Jones to be promoted from Lieutenant to Captain with a salary change from $87,855 to $92,848 effective June 19th, 2025. Change of status received from the Honorable Rob Blair, Sheriff for Zachary Anaya to be promoted from Sergeant to Lieutenant with a salary change from $76,959 to $81,985 effective June 18th, 2025. Change of status received from the Honorable Rob Blair, Sheriff for Stephen Dobson to be promoted from Corporal to Sergeant with a salary change from $71,115 to $76,939 effective June 18th, 2025. Change of status received in Honorable Rob Blair, Sheriff for Aiden Drake to change positions from Deputy to Deputy I with a salary change from $52,466 to $54,187 effective retroactive May 3rd, 2025. Letter of resignation received from the Honorable Rob Blair, Sheriff for Brenna Benham, Administrative Assistant effective June 18th, 2025. Letter of resignation received from the Honorable Rob Blair, Sheriff for Avery Heine-Mackenzie, Administrative Assistant/ Dispatcher effective July the 5th, 2025. Letter of resignation received from the Honorable Rob Blair, Sheriff for Hunter Reef, Animal Control Officer effective June 9th, 2025. Letter of resignation received in Honorable Rob Blair, Sheriff for John Calderon, Animal Control Officer effective June 30th, 2025. And letter of resignation received from Jennifer Swisher, Director of Emergency Communications for Corbin Henderson, Telecommunicator I effective June 17th, 2025. I think that's all of them. Okay, approval of minutes from the June 12th, 2025 meeting. Commissioner Boyd was not present. I guess we need to make a motion on that.
Pull those out.
Yeah, and pull your out. So if we could have a motion to approve the minutes from June 12th, please.
Yeah, so, so approve, Mr. President, for the approval of the minutes for the June 12th commission meeting.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Let the record show that Commissioner Boyd abstained. Cancelled check request, County Clerk's Finance Office. That is in your read ahead. We need a motion to approve that as well, or not? You do? Okay, so move.
Second that.
Any question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Doug is here, and we have some bond reduction. The first one is the lakes at Martinsburg, Phase One lots 21 through 40, open space parcel A-C and rec parcel final. BCP file number 2305-153 tied to number 85-03. We have a bond reduction at the lakes of Martinsburg, Phase One, Section Two, lots 1 through 20, and open space parcel D. Final. BCP file number 2305-155 tied to number 85-03. Any questions for Doug regarding those?
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Doug.
Appreciate it.
And next on our consent agenda, I was hoping to have someone here representing the staff from the Shenandoah Valley Battlefield folks, but unfortunately, they couldn't make it today. But I would like to read this resolution being proposed by our commission to send to our national delegation in Washington, DC. Resolution of support, whereas the history of Berkeley County was forever shaped by the Civil War being the location of the First Battle in the Shenandoah Valley on July the 2nd, 1861, and that is the Hoax Run site, and figured prominently in the Antietam-Geddesburg campaigns in 1862 and 1863, and is noted in President Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation. And whereas Berkeley County is richly endowed with numerous significant Civil War sites, including Hoax Run, Falling Waters, Martinsburg, North Mountain Depot, and Bunker Hill. And whereas preservation of these sites associated with the Civil War, as well as preservation of the stories associated with the war, are means to enrich the quality of life for the residents of Berkeley County and the Northern Shenandoah Valley. And whereas these sites and stories, preserved and interpreted, have the potential to generate considerable economic return to the residents of the county, as well as to the county of Berkeley itself through heritage tourism. And whereas in 1996, eight counties in the Shenandoah Valley were designated by Congress as a National Battlefield Site, the Shenandoah Valley Battlefield's National Historic District, with the purpose of preservation and interpretation of the region's significant Civil War battlefields related to historic sites. And whereas having protected in perpetuity nearly 8,000 acres of hollowed ground and now managing thousands of acres of public battlefield parks, as well as developing a regional system of interpretation and wayfinding, opening to visitor centers and museums, and preservation of historic properties, artifacts, archives, and collections. The Shenandoah Valley Battlefield's Historic District has become a national model for the preservation and interpretation, and is one of the most efficient and effective public-private partnerships in the National Park System, Park Service system today. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Berkeley County Commission urges the United States Congress to approve the addition of the County of Berkeley in West Virginia to the Shenandoah Valley Battlefield National Historic District, adopted this day, the 26th day of June, 2025. And really excited, that hopes that this happens, because what would happen if this does come to pass? The only eight counties are all in Virginia, and they have done really well with the funding from the Congress to recognize battlefields in, especially in the New Market area and down through the valley. And West Virginia was excluded from that initially in 96. There was a little feud going on with Senator Byrd and the Virginia senators over the FBI Center. And so Byrd won that battle, but he lost the battle on the Shenandoah Valley field recognition. So we're trying to become an actual certified county in this program so that there'll be direct funding coming in into West Virginia, into Berkeley County, and possibly Jefferson County to recognize more of these sites. And of course, our first ever is going to be the Hoax Run Battlefield Site that we hope to dedicate soon this year, which will be also a public park as well, so. At that point, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move, Mr. President.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
And you, and you mentioned, not to go back, but you mentioned that it was over a dispute about where the FBI facility was going to go. And it's funny that Virginia still had an FBI facility just brought into their state.
Yeah, 20, 20-some years later.
20-some years later.
Almost 30 years. We have Correction of Assessments Log, and we have Megan Murphy here to present. My half a Larry today, welcome. How are you today?
I'm good, how are you?
Good to have you.
Well, thank you. Okay. So we have three personal property exonerations due to office error, and the total on those are $810.34.
Move to accept the three office errors for personal property.
Second.
Eight, 10, 34.
I'll second that.
Any question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. And?
All right, and then we have 17 real estate exonerations due to office error. They should have been exempt, and the reason for that, those parcels were either stormwater management, open spaces, or common errors. And then that total is $5,454.86.
You heard what she had to say, or do you have a, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move to accept the 17 real estate exonerations totaling $5,454.86.
I'll second.
Any question? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you so much, have a great day.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay, we're down to Board Meeting Reports, and we'll start with Commissioner Boyd.
I had a CBB meeting yesterday. There were, had a meeting between, well, Museum Board President, Vice President came in and spoke with them about working together in the future and roles of the Museum Board and the CBB, maybe partnering on some things and working in unison. Then after that, Main Street was there applying for a grant for assistance with their three events for Christmas on Main, which is the parade, Christmas tree lighting, and then the actual Christmas on Main event that they do. There was a lot of back and forth over the budget on that and things, and the CBB ended up just awarding them the marketing budget of $5,500. That grant was a grant up to $30,000, but they awarded them $5,500 of that for marketing. The overall hotel motel is down this year. May was down 7% year-to-date, 10.9%. That seems to be a statistic nationwide, and particularly even in West Virginia right now. So they're coming in a little, I guess they're a little short on their budget this year. They're still waiting for some last checks from, from the county and the city for this fiscal year. They went over budget on marketing a little bit. They said moving into next year, they may have to cut some grants that they hand out because they can't, their, their mission is, is marketing, and they can't cut marketing. So if things stay the same with where that's at, that's kind of where they're going to be at next year is, there'll be less available grants for these programs that go on in the community. West Virginia Filmmakers Guild is coming to the Eastern Panhandle for the first time ever. It'll be July 12th at the BRICS. It's open to the public, if anybody'd like to attend. Another thing that was up, though, with the CBB that costs a little more was the docent program that they do. There was $85,000 spent over the last year for docents between all the locations that they cover, the Roundhouse, and I know there's several other places. We only have like one docent that does tours there, but they have a program that's available for, for a lot of nonprofits, and they, they pay these docents to work there on different hours for tours and things, and, and, which is a program that, that is very well-needed and, and a good program. So that was up this year. They don't know if that'll be the same next year, but that was one of their big expenses, too. That's extended my meetings.
I want to say, of course, one of the things that the CBB fund was the Miss West Virginia.
Yes.
And that was last week.
That was last week.
Here in Berkeley County, again, in Martinsburg. Been several years now here, hosted here, which is really a wonderful thing. And in fact, Natalie Tennant, who's the Commissioner for Canal County, I think her daughter was a participant, and she was here last week as well, so.
They, they did talk about that, and I forgot about that. They, they did talk about that, and they said that a lot of the people from Canal County and other places, that some of them have never been to the Eastern Panhandle, and really talked up Berkeley County and how things were here and how nice the place was, and.
Where do they hold that at?
They do it at that church on Rock Cliff Drive.
Airborne.
Airborne, yes.
Wonderful facility there, and.
Yeah.
Really a great event.
The CBB awarded a grant to them for, for that program last year. They got one of the $30,000 grants, and, you know, that, that's a big pageant. It's moved here semi-permanent now. The facility is one of the best in the state, and it saves them from having to rent a lot of extra things and such. So they've continued to do, I think, three years in a row now at that airborne church.
Andy Reed, who is a former Miss West Virginian, been a resident here her entire life, kind of heads that whole.
Yes.
Miss West Virginia program here, and does a great job at that. You know, we've been blessed from Berkeley County to have several Miss West Virginias in the past, and. I can't name them all, but I know a few of them.
Tiffany Lawrence?
Yeah.
Well. She might be from Jefferson.
Jefferson, but you have Becky Porterfield, and. You have Miller's wife was, she was Harley Miller's daughter.
Mm-hmm.
Carolyn Miller was Miss West Virginia. And, yeah. But thank you, Steve, for that. Commissioner Hardy?
Yeah, so I'd like to talk a little bit about our public hearings we had last week. We did not have a commission meeting last week due to the Juneteenth holiday, but we did have public hearings on Tuesday morning at 10:00, and again, Tuesday afternoon at 5:00. The morning meeting was not very well-attended. The afternoon meeting was, it was good conversations had with some of our local developers. There was a few, I believe, residents here, some in favor, some not in favor. But I feel like we are doing our due diligence. We are listening to our constituents. We're listening to the county on everything about the impact fees that will be coming on new residential construction in Berkeley County. And so we will have one more public hearing scheduled. I believe that's July 2nd.
Wednesday?
Yeah, July 2nd at 10, at 10 o'clock.
10 a.m.
10 a.m. in the morning. So if anyone has any questions or concerns, please make sure you come here and, and be heard. We are trying to be as completely transparent as possible and listen to everyone in regards to the impact fees. I did have a water board meeting on two, on Monday night that I did not make. I had spent most of the day out in the heat, and by the time I got home, I just couldn't muster up the.
Stamina.
The energy to get there. So, but I did talk to Jim Olet and had a little briefing about the meeting. And really, the biggest thing in that meeting was, is they opened the bids for the new water main that's going to be put in, out of the new, of the upgrades from the Water Department. They did receive seven bids, and they are going to have a special meeting tomorrow to go through those, and that probably will be awarded tomorrow as long as they can receive all the information that they may need to, if there's any clarifications need on any of those bids. But it was exciting to see seven bidders come in, and a lot of interest in that project. That's a 43-inch water main, and is a very big piece of water pipe, carrying a lot of water and a lot of pressure, so that'll be interesting to see. a lot of water and a lot of pressure, so that'll be interesting to see the numbers on that. And that's all the meetings that I've had this week.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Whitaker. Yes, sir. Had a Airport Authority meeting. I kind of discussed it with Nick. I wasn't able to attend, but the one item that was on the agenda is they did a modification to our, our, our board.
Bylaws?
Bylaws, thank you. Golly days.
It's the heat, Jim.
It is. I'm sorry, it is. It's baking me. But anyway, we did that, and just a reminder that Saturday is the Independence Day celebration out at the airport, and all are welcome, and it's going to be a great, great fireworks scene out there, so come on out and enjoy the festivities with everybody.
Hopefully, the rain will stay away this year.
But you know what? We got a rain date, and if it doesn't, we'll do it the next day, so.
Thanks, sir. For myself, last Tuesday, a week ago, I had the public hearings like John talks about, but before our evening public hearing, I attended the twenty-fifth anniversary celebration of our farmland protection program here in Berkeley County. It was extremely well-attended, a lot of folks there, and by the end of this calendar year, we should be at almost ten thousand acres here in Berkeley County preserved in farmland protection, so. Wednesday, the week before last, I had lunch with State Treasurer Larry Pack and his staff of three other folks, along with Commissioner Whitaker, Mayor Knowles, Nick Deal, Chad Weinbrenner from our staff, and Tom Young representing the Sheriff's Department, and we met out at Sycamore and had a good hour and a half conversation during lunch with Treasurer Pack, and he is very, very interested in what's going on over in the Panhandle here in Berkeley County, and we had great conversation with him, so. He said he was a real good friend of Vernon Chris.
He is.
And he probably, he'd work on him something for us, so.
I had dinner, I had dinner with him one day that week.
He told us that.
Yeah, obviously, we all couldn't meet together, so I had dinner with him and Delegate Mike Height, and he, you know, he must have asked me thirty questions about what was going on in Berkeley County, and he's very impressed with what's going on in Berkeley County.
Yeah.
Larry Pack's a good man.
He is. I think he is. He has spoke at our C C A meetings now twice in the last year. I've been very impressed with his thoughts, and this past Wednesday, yesterday, Gary and I were on W R N R for an hour, and we discussed the impact fees. We discussed data centers, and I also had a Senior Service Board meeting yesterday, but, and then later this evening, we have an ambulance start at five, and we have a Workforce Region Seven Annual Meeting at six-thirty, so busy agenda today, but I wanted to ask Gary if he'd say comments about he and Eddie's trip down to visit the data center in Virginia last week.
Yes, so, as you all know, we went down to Sterling area and went to one of the QTS One facility there, and they call it QTS One Ash, which is probably about half of the size of the first one that's proposed to be built here in Berkeley County. Really awesome facility, probably really centered on the vision of public safety and veterans of service. Many of the staff that they employ, either one retired military or out of public safety, it's really neat to see when you go in there for you, they've got a gargantuan flag hanging with a wall of history of the employees and how they served and what they've done, but top-notch, I'll say this, and I said it on the radio, or maybe I said it off-radio, but to Maria yesterday, when it comes to noise, we walked out of the facility out of a ten-by-ten roll-up door. We walked maybe ten steps from the door, you couldn't hear a fan spin. It was so quiet, so I think they'll be a good neighbor to the hospice area, but it's going to be really slick, and they were more than welcoming, and it's an exciting thing to see happen come here.
So, it's the same, same group that's going to build the ones down on the Jefferson County border here.
Project Carmel.
Yeah. Anything else, Gary, you want to talk about as far as your meetings or anything?
I think John used to ask.
Yeah, I have one quick thing I'd like to say that I forgot to talk about. I'm always pretty quick to say unloving and unkind things about the West Virginia Department of Highways, but, but when they do things right, I want to make sure that I also, you know, say kind and loving things about them, so I do want to thank the West Virginia Department of Highways for putting in the left lane turn signals on Route eleven at Bennington Road and Knightown Road. Those are something that is a joint effort that this commission, our local senators and our local delegates have been working on with the West Virginia Department of Highways for some time to get those left lane turn signals in there with the two new developments that's on Bennington Road, the proposed apartment complex that's going on the corner of Knightown Road. That's something that's, that's needed, and I appreciate West Virginia Department of Highways recognizing that and addressing that. There are many other areas that we'd like to address. I mean, me and Steve have been working very hard on trying to make sure that we get a signal at the new C M C exit and entrance into their plant. We want to make sure we get a signal there. We continue to work.
And praise the Lord, Exit Twelve is finished.
Exit Twelve is finished. There's a roundabout blowing in on Route eleven and.
And it has helped a lot.
It has.
Exit Twelve is moving, not as fast as we'd like, but better.
I can tell you for personal experience.
They're opening at ten, so.
Yeah, no, what, what has helped was actually the striping and the designated for where you need to turn and what lane you need to be in.
It's kind of roulette without those lines.
It was.
Having, having, when the people come off the interstate to make a left on the Foxcroft Avenue, they have a double lane there now, which is probably the best improvement of anything was that, so.
Goodness, to W E D.
We thank the Highway Department for that.
And we have a continued project there with the roundabout at Meadow Lane Plaza and Route eleven, and we're still working on everything we can do for Route nine and nine oh one and anything out that way.
This is a great day for me to be chairing the meeting because I talked about the nine oh one in Hoax Run Park, and now we're getting ready to open bids on the Inwood, the new Inwood Park in South Berkeley County. The people down there are starved for this, and it's been a long time getting to this point, but we're going to open bids now. And Gary, you want to mention the review of the bid proposal?
Sure, so you have three responses. You do have certification of publication. It was in the Journal. It was advertised on your website. It was distributed to known vendors of interest. Chris Whedell from C E C is here. He's the project lead that's, that's working with you contractually to make sure all your i's are dotted and t's are crossed. I believe, Chris, there were ten, twelve vendors?
Twelve vendors. One of them was a concrete supplier, so he wasn't.
So, eleven?
He was just there to be done, but there was eleven vendors.
So, you had eleven vendors of that. You've got responses from three. The way that C E C helped write the specs, there's two documents from both. One should be a price proposal.
So, one A, one B?
Sure, sure, but bid number three, you see the way they're stacked there, there is just one envelope, so hopefully, Mr. President, it's easy for you, or Mr. Vice President, it's easier for you to find the pricing proposal. Now, there's some opt-outs and opt-ins in there, so once you open these and read them into public, we'll let C E C do their business and help us review them.
For a matter of conversation while we're waiting to get these bids open, we have about a six million dollars available for phase one of this project, and I want the public to understand that three million of this is, is grant money coming from either the federal government, the state government, or other sources of donations, and I'm just thrilled that fifty percent of this project is going to be funded and not on the burden of our, our, our budget for the taxpayers.
And you sold three million dollars worth of bonds yesterday?
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
To match that, and we're thinking also that the impact fee funds could be used, perhaps maybe even pay off some of the bonds.
As well as T I F funds.
And T I F funds as well, so we've, we're working hard. The staff has done a great job, and C E C has done a great job, Region Nine, to get us to this point. We can't thank you enough, and this is really exciting, so hopefully, we won't fall off our chairs today when we open these bids.
That one's your first.
The first one is, help me out here, Gary. This first bid is from Warner Construction Incorporated, a division of R W Warner Incorporated. Doesn't say where they're from. Frederick Maron. He's got a whole list of things as far as the base bid broken down into a bunch of categories, so we'll get to the total here.
Nice page, John.
Right there. Yeah. Fifteen million, six hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty cents.
Could you repeat that, Steve?
Yes, sir. Fifteen million, six hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars
Just so everyone understands, there's seventy-six lines of bidding points in that document.
Right, right.
So, there's lots of opportunity for deduction, and it was designed that way.
Sure, and they'll need a lot of review.
Okay, this one is from Lance Construction in Winchester, Virginia, and the total price is seven million, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars and one cent. I'm starting to feel a little better. Okay, this one is from.
Triple Crown.
Triple Crown, Martinsburg, West Virginia, and the price is ten million, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's the three, all three?
Yes, sir.
So, our staff, C E C, will review these proposals and get back to us in the next few weeks to hopefully make a decision on where we go from here, so. Thank you all for your input and your performance. A little bit more complicated than our normal bidding. It's big for furniture or for apparatuses or whatever.
Well, there's lots of parts and pieces.
A whole lot of parts and pieces here. It looks like we've got a potential to work with one of our contractors here to get this thing rolling, so. Next on the agenda for today is a Boarding and Commission interview with Mark Thompson, Berkeley County Roundhouse Authority. You come forward, Mark. Good to have you here. They normally ask that. You just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you have an interest to serve on this particular board.
All right.
And then we'll ask the commission if they have any questions for you.
Okay.
So, thank you for being here.
Thank you. My name is Mark Thompson. I, I live in Martinsburg. I've lived here for, since 2011. I split my time between here and Arlington, Virginia, but I like, I spend most of my time out here. I currently live at one fifteen South Queen Street. If you know, it's on the same block as the county, the county courthouse, and I recently retired from twenty-five years of federal civil service as a contract specialist, so I'm familiar with awarding and managing large contracts and grants and things like that, but I, I'm interested in the Roundhouse because I think it's a, it's a huge piece of American history, and I think it's, it's in the middle of the city, but for the longest time, it felt like the, the city itself has not taken very much interest in it, and I think, I think that what, what's happening with the Roundhouse now with the, with the farmers market and all of these different community activities there, I think that we're on, we're finally on the right path, and I'd like to contribute some of my effort to help it continue growing as a, as a community asset. So, I'm not really familiar with public speaking that much, so I'll sort of leave the floor open to questions. I also have a, I also have a piece of property on Vicki Bullet that actually backs up to the Roundhouse property, and what I'm doing with that property is I actually am growing native species like pawpaws and things like that, and so I see the creek as another huge asset that, that, that the town has to offer that I think that we should be putting more emphasis on.
That's coming, because there's a raised grant that the City of Martinsburg and five-four, working with the County Commission, and it's a twenty million dollar federal grant. That's going to really improve that trail along the Tuscula Creek to get from Region Nine Jail Trail, we call it, but the Nine Bypass Trail, all the way to Oakdale Park over to Lake Thomas. So, that project, I just, that approval to move forward.
It's approved and moving. We have a kickoff meeting.
And moving forward, so.
Well, I'm glad, I'm familiar with the trail, but, you know, I was kind of wondering about what's going on with, I know the award was made, but I was just wondering with, like, where, what the status is with the, the funding aspect of it.
Right, just got released and free.
I'm glad to hear it.
It was in limbo there for a while, but we're moving forward again.
I'm also.
Yeah, the Tuscula Creek starts out at our Poor House Farm Park. It originates about a mile south of there, and it flows through it, of course. We use that water to build a lake there. It goes through War Memorial Park. It flows through Oakdale Park. It floats down on past several other little mini parks in town, and so it is a wonderful resource that we've never tapped the full potential of it, and this is going to be a wonderful thing for the quality of life in not only Martinsburg, but all Berkeley County, so.
And I'm also a chair of the Martinsburg Shade Tree Commission. I've been chair for the past five years, so I'm familiar with, I've done, spent a lot of my free time collaborating with planting grants for tree, tree planting projects. The last one was last fall in, in War Memorial Park, and hopefully, if the Kukapin Institute cooperates in awarding this grant, we'll be doing another tree planting effort at Charlotte Prather Park and P O Fortner Park in collaboration with, with Martinsburg Berkeley County Parks and Rec this fall.
Great. We'll go start out since Commissioner Boyd represents us on the Roundhouse Authority. We'll start out with him and see if he has any questions for you.
Well, I know you, and I know you're already on our foundation, our foundation board, and, you know, we've had a lot of ups and downs with board members there who get on the board and seem like they want to help, and then it's like they just take a space and don't show up and different things, so I know you're dedicated to be there, and so I would just want to thank you for applying, and hopefully, we can get you on the board and help move things forward with somebody who's truly interested in helping.
All right. Yeah, so first of all, thank you for your service that you're already involved with, and thank you for your willingness to want to be on this board. I will tell you, the Roundhouse is something that I have struggled with. I've not really ever had a clear vision of what the Roundhouse can be or what it will be, or, you know, what, I think its positioning is somewhat challenging, I believe getting to it, there's challenges there, and it's never really been. to it, there's challenges there and it's never really been something that I've been able to envision how, what will be the final concept of that. What, what is your vision for the Roundhouse?
Well, for me, I think that it's all about accessibility and that's the key to solving that problem. You're right, it's hard to get to by car. Even most people who, who lived in Martinsburg for decades don't really know how to get there by car.
Correct.
That's a challenge and I, I think that part of it is also the walkability aspect we need to increase, like just the fact that for the farmer's market, very often the doors to the, the train station pedestrian overpass are not unlocked during the weekends makes it difficult for people to get over there. And I think that if, you know, that's a simple, I, I say simple, but it's simple in terms of a technical fix, but obviously somebody needs to, you know, address that issue. But also I'd like to see a pedestrian walking bridge across the creek go, going to the eastern side of, of the city. I think that that would add to the accessibility of the, of the, the space as well. And I think it would open up the whole eastern edge of the city towards greater economic development because with, with a walk, with a walking bridge across the creek.
I think that potential might happen in the RAGE grant project as part of that plan, so it's coming, I think.
I'd like to see that because it also gives accessibility to the, the Mark train and the Amtrak as well. So you're, you're, you're killing a bunch of, a bunch of issues with the same solution.
Thank you very much.
Done, John?
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Whitaker?
Yes, sir. As always, I always commend and thank everybody who wants to come in and volunteer their time because sometimes it's a thankless job. I mean, it's, it's never, never easy to find good, good volunteers. Kind of reading through here and I'm glad you chose Martinsburg to be as, as your home and wanting to give back to the community that's, that's given to so many over the years. Like HD and John, I mean, it's, I've donated a lot of, of time down there to try to get it to a point where it can be used all the time and, and I hope to continue to do that. So my thanks to you for, for wanting to be part of it and, and hope to see you down there.
Thank you.
Commissioner Whitaker has donated a lot of time in this community. People don't realize at the Roundhouse, at the youth fair and all kinds of places, he saved us over $150,000 on his donation of time and equipment on the youth fair water system that we put in a year or so ago. So he's very familiar with that. And I just want to say that the resolution we passed this morning to send to Congress about the National Battlefield, Shenandoah Valley Field funding, if we become an actual player in that, there's going to be significant potential funding of maybe perhaps as much as a million a year that could be spent here in West Virginia, Berkeley or Jefferson County towards that. And of course, the Roundhouse was a huge part of the Civil War. It changed hand 39 times during the Civil War in those four, four years, which is incredible. So it's a large, was a large player in the Civil War situation and I, I'm not so sure that we can't bring that into the Roundhouse area as well as other parts of Berkeley County to help with funding there and get some things done, so. But again, thank you for your willingness to serve and we appreciate you being here today and you sound very qualified and very interested in. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
We'll, we'll, we'll be in touch with you.
Thank you.
Good?
Yep.
We don't have any appointments or anything today, I don't believe, do we? Okay. Other than that, we have no other business? We're going to ask if there's any other items from the public at this time. If not, I need a motion to recess.
A motion that we go into recess.
Okay.